...out there on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you're running radar. You know, if you have a big narcotics, if the whole narcotics team comes in here, if there's a child exploitation unit, you don't pay for anything other than what you're paying for. The full services of the sheriff's office are there for you with no charge on our budget.
That was my understanding, Sheriff, when I was talking to Ma. That, you know, we look at the three, we still have the backup that wasn't going to cost us anymore. So it didn't seem to make much sense that let's add another FTE.
Well, you know, I don't mean to cut you off, but I didn't know, we don't know. We just want a basic, here's what you got.
Yeah, well, so are we.
With the mayor the other day, we talked about your reserve program. Well, when I gave the example of the whole strawberry festival, 10,000 people come in, well, obviously, we have to bring more pebbies in. Same thing happens with Deltona, when a five pender comes in and they would function with 20,000 people in the park. We have to put extra pebbies out there, they get food for that, because there's a 10-hour heat temp. The mayor said, hey, we have this reserve program, people are looking at their certificates. I'm like, we never do that. So we would use them for traffic control, and that was something I would, I would say they would move for into our organization. But again, there's things that we don't know, we just want to buy a basic, here's what you have.
Well, with saying that, how much time do you think it would take for the sheriff's department and staff to be able to get together and work out, you know, all of the...
The suggestion would be if you appoint folks from city government, and I appoint folks from here, you appoint a couple of citizens, and you sit down over, I think, in 30 to 45 days, everybody could sit down, talk about the do's and don'ts, and then the community can make a decision where they want to go once all the information is out. So there's representatives from the community, there's representatives from you, and then everybody sit down and talk about what direction you would like to go, what direction you might not want to go. You know, at the end of the day, it's their decision on what they, what they, what they want.
And Lynn, just to clarify too, my question, Sheriff, wasn't to try to increase numbers, but I wanted to make sure that you were trying to look at apples to apples.
Exactly.
If you don't need the coverage the city has, that's an issue for a different discussion. So I was just trying to make sure that you had in front of you, so that for the most part, equal what we were doing.
No, and I appreciate that, I'd rather look at apples to apples, and then we can negotiate that if we need to. I also brought up a question, speaking with Ma the other night, or the other afternoon, it seemed like it was tonight, on leasing out our station. I understand that you do lease other buildings and responsibility.
Unfortunately, we do. We do.
We do.
But that's something we talked about, that I personally would want to keep a footprint here, and we would, that would be something reflected in the bill that we have. And I don't know what the value of that would be, that's something that the numbers guys can talk to, but that is something that we would consider, same thing with your vehicles. You know, if you were to make that decision, how many vehicles do you have that, oh, I gotta do is re-rat them, and those vehicles, more sheriff's vehicles, which will also serve as a reduction. You know, your weapons, how many people are we hiring from you for other purposes? Could we take the weapons as well?
Um, could we take those dollars and put it into a different account, or would you prefer or think it's better to take those dollars and reduce the FTE count at the end of the year, so when our budget comes up, if that's the point, yet we've got revenue to it all?
I think that's something you would have to decide.
Okay.
But looking at those options out there and figure out what is the best way to do that.
Okay, I think that's it for now, Lynn.
I just want to say to my fellow commissioners here, that as a commissioner, or a group of, we have a fiduciary responsibility to all of our citizens of this community to spend their money wisely while providing the highest level of essential services possible, and in order to do so, we must investigate all options possible before deciding on which direction to go pertaining to our citizens' budget, and how we provide our essential services to our community. Unlike our fire services, garbage collection, and store water fees, a good portion of our police services are funded through our local ad valorem taxes that are collected for our general fund. And to that point, I would like to point out that a whopping 51% of property owners here pay absolutely zero, zero, to the local ad valorem taxes. The Woods of Lake Helen pay and account for 29% of all of the remaining 20%, all of the remaining... The remaining 20%, many in that class 20% pay less than $200 annually, and others pay as little as $14, maybe less. This is not a sustainable situation. Some say this commission should work harder to bring businesses into town, but what services can we offer them? A crumbling infrastructure and no sewer system? That option should have been addressed many commissioners ago. Unfortunately, no one wanted growth back then either, and here we are today, stagnant and spending most of our local ad valorem taxes on salaries with nothing left for any improvements to our city. We as a community better get serious and start running this town like a business, or very soon there won't be a city to run. If we don't put this on the ballot on 2026 to vote for, soon we'll have to figure out how we're going to dissolve a city, because we can't. This city is literally living off of the backs of 49% of taxpayers in this city. I'm not raising taxes anymore as long as I'm sitting up here, because I'm one of the 49%.
Well, my comment is addressed to you, Chief. The, you guys were put on a spot, and you gave us what information you can give us of what we asked for, and since we did not have an in-depth meeting to be able to come up with everything we wanted for the police service, you couldn't provide that. You gave us a lot of good information, and I really appreciate that, and I thank your department for that information.
Thank you for saying that, sir. We don't have a plan to, to log in this way. Just here's the information, it's the folks behind me, you folks will make that decision. I will give a plug to my organization. We are what's called Triarc nationally accredited. There's 18,000 police departments in this country, only 11 of them are, and we're one of them. We're accredited as an organization, our communication center, and our training center. We meet or exceed national standards. So I just want to throw that out there, because somehow, when I leave here, somebody's going to ask for dispatches, that's okay.
A lot of surprises.
Mr. Brooks?
I'd like to hear from the fellow department. How are the folks leading this?
I'd like to say, it was mentioned that the city commissions in the past have dropped the ball. When I was running for mayor, for commissioner back in 2006, the one thing that I kept being asked, are you poor-broke or no-broke? And the one question that I had to answer with was, well, I'm for smart broke, and that kind of quieted a lot of people. At the same time, Victoria Park was being built, 4,000 units being built at that time, and a quarter of our workforce was in reconstruction. They built Deltona, they built the land, they built a lot of the cities around here, and what they came away with, when they came to the city commission meeting, they're the ones to say, we don't want a house where you can jump from roof to roof. We wanted to be able to have space, so that's why we came up with the, a half an acre in the, in the size of the house. Going forward, Commissioner Butler just gave a 49% of the population is supporting the other 50% of the population.
Fifty-one?
Fifty-one percent, thank you. In the course of the years that I've been city commissioner, and now mayor, I haven't seen a community commercial development program that would reach out and to bring businesses in. Where our city right now, our police force is the lowest-paid police force in entire county, and we're $21 an hour. At some point in time, our police force actually made less than our public works, the guys that cut the grass. Morale in this department is one of the things that can go sour quick, and when it does, it can take the whole city with it. Our men are in a place now that I actually had an officer tell me that he was scared. Officers don't tell things like that, they're the ones that run into gun fire. Imagine being in a situation where their pension is scanned like that. I think we owe them something. We also owe our citizens the best possible commission that they are paying for, even if our pay is as low as it is. We have on top here, we've gotten the feedback from the community by many different venues. I visited three churches yesterday, and I get a lot of feedback, I've got a lot of feedback from the, from the community, from the churches. And I would, going ahead, I would just, as a, as an aside, police officers, go to your church, come in uniform, let them see you as not somebody just trying to do something nasty to you. That's just my, my personal. Even commissioners, what were some of these churches, they gave us a church address. We're going to vote on this at some point this evening, and the problem that I have is that because of the failure of the commission over the years, we're now going to pass along our failures, if we so decide, to the officers that have stood in the gap and protected us and put their lives on the line for us. Every, every, every reserve officer that comes through this city, have left here a better cop, because we took them around and showed them that this, cops that left here as reserve officers, I don't have a number, but I guarantee you, they're all throughout this, throughout this county, and insured. A reserve officer that we have will stand in front of a bullet just like a full-time, full-fa Officer, and take the same kind of response. I can't put a dollar sign on that. We got to remember that we're dealing with human lives, not just computers and numbers. That is maybe an unpopular analogy, but it isn't actually a fact. Our mission and our budgets, we have to move money around every day, we have to move money around that we don't have every day. We are, we deal, we are dealing with, right now, we're still backed up 1.9 billion dollars from, look, look, from hurricanes. 1.9 billion dollars to drop on this city's destiny right now. It's been outstanding for the longest hurricane, you know. We don't have staff to be able to run down the FEMA, so we had to hire someone, and that's their only job, is to go and look for FEMA money. We don't have a financial officer in this department, in this city. Years ago, they farmed that out to a company, and we thought we were getting a better deal, because not only did we have a financial officer, but we had all the detractors that went behind it, to try and catch up to them. So I'm passionate about this, from one perspective, and I think I'll be, I'll be wearing, I'm not wearing my, feeling from my sleeve, Roger is a retired firefighter, and I think if we were talking about firefighters right now, he would probably have the same position that I have. I'm a retired law enforcement officer who shot a lot of duties, and this is law enforcement, so my heart is with my officers, that has not been changed. So I sit here in this position, and as that position that I sit here, I hold both the responsibility of our staff, who will lose it, our city administrator, I'll say, the best city administrator I've worked with, and I've worked with every single one of them. What is it we're doing in this city that can't happen? What is it that we're not doing in this city that can keep a qualified person that has brought up the morale of staff here because of whatever you want to say? So we keep passing that buck along, and as commissioners, we have a responsibility. Every commission is basically the weight of our commission. I'll be right there. The responsibility of, of our commissioners and this commission, it doesn't pass on necessarily to the next commission, because we can outdo, undo everything that was just done. As I sit here today, our last city administrator was hired by three fifths of the people that are sitting here today. Three fifths of that commission fired that same city administrator. 100% of the commissioners in the city up there voted for that man right there, and we saw something that we liked, and we saw something that we felt that we worked with. But what is it then, what is it in our system that, I'll say, why, I said this before, we have a system where every year, we have a new city, every year we have an election. Our terms are two-year terms, they're not term limited, I've served at least seven terms. So every time you have to have a election, there's always the test dummy that the bullseye put on their back, and that is the city administrator. Whether he turns over or not, but he has to take the flak if he doesn't have thick skin, or if he doesn't feel the work. We are now running out of people. We are running out of people. So the numbers don't matter, if you don't have the people that's going to do the job. We need to take an internal look at ourselves before we start blaming, or putting blame outside of our jurisdiction as city commissioner. As you can see, I didn't write these down, this is stuff that's coming from my heart, just like everyone else here that's had it today. I think we've gathered enough of our hearts into this city that we want the best for, and want to be able to come even further. Now, just one other thing I'll say, and I'll stop. When we thought about whether or not we wanted to bring this to the public, the quickest way that we could bring this to the public was to make it a ballot amendment. In order for it to get on the ballot for this year, we'd have to have the package all done and wrapped and sealed and given to the supervisor of the election September 1st. At the time that this came up, we had one meeting in between, which is next month, I mean, next, two weeks from now, which would be the 21st of August, because next week, we're going to go up to Orlando for the League of Cities Convention, which we'll all be out of town. So it was a pressure point that we had to make at this decision, in a very short window, at whatever you, I've heard different reasons why we should have done it sooner, why we should have done it later, we do have one most important thing on the table, which is our city administrator and the replacement. And in order to do that in an orderly fashion, we need to know that we either have somebody in the breach when he leaves here September 3rd. Something happened this term that never happened before. Our city administrator was terminated, his contract was, in, I believe, September, he had him took December the 4th to leave. He was also given, per his contract, he was given 20 weeks of severance pay, which he could have took that pay and went home, but he decided to wait and see to it that he had his replacement. You also had a mayor that was elected in August, which was in the primary. I was mayor-elect in August. We also had a new city deputy clerk that was just building in at the same time.
Mayor, can we get a point of order, please?
Point of order, yes.
It's hard to use, because we were talking about, we're off the subject.
Okay, well, they're saying that I'm off the subject, but there again, this is the only time that we can talk as commissioners and as, as legal to, to our staff. So.
Mr. Mayor, wait.
I would feel, I would feel that we have a motion on the table, we have, are in discussion, and I've never heard anybody in discussion be told that they're off the topic, because discussion is basically whatever you come up with. I sat in many of these commission meetings, and we have talked about everything under the sun, so I was relinquished too. I was relinquished, I was relinquished my time. Sue?
Thank you.
Thank you, and you have a point of order behind you, so he can talk after you.
I would, he said point of order?
Yes, he did.
Oh, good, thank you. Okay, I have to respond to what you said somewhere in all of that, was, you admitted that we're constantly Robin Peter to pay Paul. How long can that go on? This is what, this is the point. How long can we continue to do that? We've been doing it through the whole life history of this town. The other thing I would like to say is that nobody said push this through to this ballot, it was always said for next year. And have you ever had a job that was job for life? Okay, then, that was another point that I have, and there was one other thing I wanted to say.
Well, let me just respond to that. The only reason that we brought up the idea of the ballot amendment, because that was something that we had to discuss, and we had to figure out when we had to do it, so we had a limited time to do it, whether we wanted to wait till next year or not. It might, and actually, what it would do, I would think, if we knew that we had something close time to do it, it might be something that we could work on between now and next year. But this is a very close moment in time, we don't have a small period of window. Okay? Now, call the decision.
My point of order was our subject is the police department, not everything.
Amen.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, may I just bring up one thing that was... I'm sorry, I can't... You brought up the salaries that our PD is paid much, much lower than any of the cities in the county. While I'm looking at the budget for fiscal year '26, our police officers for their annual salaries are anywhere from $61,557, $98,626 for the chief, $58,733 unknown, $55,862 unknown, $57,274 unknown, $48,616 unknown, I would imagine that's our newest officer, $58,616 unknown, there again, I would think that would be our newest officer. So, listening at the workshop, when you asked the question of the sheriff, who I believe looked at Ma, who had the answer, what would the incoming salary be if you could take over our police officers, move them in, if they passed the application, and everything that they have to go through? I think your starting salary was $59,000, so I don't see where we're so much lower than any other cities.
Well, actually, I was referring to the salaries that I was given. Lake Helen is $21, $21, and the highest is $25.
But you have to, we're looking at our budget.
All, you have to include all of the, their vacation pay, their insurance, we pay 100% of that, all of the perks, everything, so it all, you can't go just by salary, because if you go just by salary and you make that salary, then, then you're really looking at a budget that you can't afford.
All this should have been brought up when we were having our budget workshops and budget hearings.
Well, we were not thinking about firing.
Instead of us playing a shell game during our budget workshops, we should have been discussing this stuff.
Well, I agree with you, definitely the issue that we're talking about.
We were trying to figure out if we were going to give a 6% increase bonus.
Exactly.
That was the major.
Okay, so, I think everybody here has heard enough of me and heard enough of the present.
If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something, I've thought about it, and I don't want to wait in case this changes y'all's opinion about if you want to speak or not, but I'm preparing for this meeting, the majority of people that I talked to or saw posting online or sent emails was in support of our Lake Helen Police Department. As I've, you know, been before in this, we've had this topic come up before, and I've always been supportive of the police department. In our last workshop, I did say I'm not looking to replace our police department, I firmly stand in that position. However, I am going to keep an open mind in case I am wrong, and you all have a different opinion, or the commission, majority of the commission would like to move forward in a different direction. Of course, I want to consider everything, and, you know, your, your tax dollars, my tax dollars are very important, I want to make sure that we are spending them appropriately. But if this is something you want to spend it on, and you want to keep the tax dollars on the Lake Helen Police Department, I can't, I mean, I'm in good faith, I can't just say, let's, let's go forward with, you know, discussing the sheriff's office. So that's where I stand on it. Either way, do you think that it should be put out to vote on ballot in 2026? I think that is the most responsible thing to do, so we can really have an idea of what everyone wants. That being said, I think, thank you.
I got an email from Sophia Majewski, and it was addressed to you, but in it, it says that she wanted me to present it at the meeting, so, and everybody, all the commissioners got it. If you want me to, I'll read what she wrote, or I'll just get it to Roxanne and make sure it's in, has her comments for the meeting.
Is she a registered voter?
I would, I would just say that...
She's a registered voter?
Sophia Majewski, I don't know, she lives in my zone, so...
Why would he do that? Boy, pretend something to you.
As I said, my computer was not very good, so Roxanne was going to keep it for us, so I apologize.
That's okay. Mine was down for a week, also, 19 minutes.
I really can't understand why we don't trust our community to do, to get, tell us what they want. It makes no sense for five of us to sit up here and decide, we're not even going to put that on the ballot, because y'all shouldn't have a voice in this.
I wouldn't be part of that five, that was why I asked to find out what did we have to do.
I'm saying...
To be part of the ballot, I was looking for that one.
That's what I'm saying, we should not, as five people, decide, and that's why it needs to go on now.
I'm in agreement with you, that's what I'm saying, I'm in agreement with you. It's too short a period of turnaround now for us to make something that is monumental as this.
Not this year.
It's not going to happen, I said, it's too, it's too short a period of time to make a decision that won't take effect until next year. If we have the ballot, my argument for the ballot, as you brought it up, my argument for the ballot is she, because these are normally low turnout elections on odd years, and it might be a better fit if we projected toward the next year's ballot. That was the only thing I was presenting, because it just means, like, it was too short a window to come up with this decision, right? And that was it, and that was if the commission even wanted to go with the ballot, because they could have just made a decision without, you know, let's do this right now. That is the strength of this commission, you can make decisions if you want to.
Mayor, if we listen to some of the citizens have to say?
We will, so that we get, that is why we have to, we have, you have to make a...
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We're going to leave, we don't want to log in this way?
I don't blame you now.
Folks, have a great night. Thank you.
We have three speakers to be interviewed. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak and have not... Over there. Okay, we're going to take a five minutes just so that you know. Ready?
Five questions. Five questions.
Mayor, can you just remind them, three minutes per speaker, not be interrupted, and I'll run the time.
Thank you. Y'all heard that? You got three minutes, and then the clock will go. Thank you.
Time pressed, 3:52 minute. Be very brief. I know you have difficult decisions to make, but I'm just here to say that I support the police department and I want to stay over. That's all. Thank you.
Travis Graham?
You're next. Now, we call it by the... You put it in the blue slip?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Travis Graham?
Yes, Commissioner Mayor. 244 Baxter Road, Lake Helen, Florida. I work for a small city. I've always worked in small cities, and small cities want the service that this police department gives. There is nothing the sheriff's office can do to match that. They can do it with law enforcement, and they can protect people, but for you to sit there and say it's not a crime-ridden spot is because of these people. Because they're protected. If you take them away, amen.
Your job also is not to blame the history of the city. Your job as a commissioner is to fix the city, find new revenue, and stop being the problem that is making it hard for these people to live.
Amen.
While I'm speaking, you two want to talk over me? Give him the mic. That ain't them. We don't want to hear that.
Let me just say, let me just clarify. When we have public discussion, the public, it's a one-way communication. We're not back and forth. You get a chance to say whatever you want without being interrupted. I just need the rest of the process.
I know, and I didn't want to pay it.
Thank you.
And I'll say one last thing. I think you guys have discovered the problem concerning the city, and it's in front of me.
Ranger James, 470 Norton Street, Lake Helen. First off, I want you to know this meeting, everybody in this room supports the loose county sheriff's office.
Amen.
We're diligently saving lives. What we're here to talk about is the hometown of Lake Helen, the gem. When you have your meetings, get all the facts, the numbers right. That's all the people want to see, is the real numbers, not the hearsay, and then you got to add on all the special events. July 4th, the parades, all the little things. Besides that, Lake Helen Police Department goes above and beyond 24/7.
Amen.
If you all don't mind, I'm going to say one little thing. I'd like to ask these two to resign. I'm supposed to be a back and forth. Done, so...
Resign.
That's right. Anthony Wushan, 424 Hazel Street. Is there a copy of all the city's crime rate in front of y'all right now?
Yep.
Okay? Every single city with numbers. Here's a list though. Okay, every city in Volusia County. Okay? Now, for one thing, if you look up an AI-generated thing of our crime rate, you will hear Lake Helen, Florida has a very low crime rate compared to both the national state averages and the county averages, and of overall, 8.11 per thousand people crime rate. Okay? Let's look at that. Oak Hill, 9.27. Pearson, 8.741. Debury, 11. England, 14. Osteen, 11. Deltona, 11. Daily on Springs, 9. Barberville, 23.25. I had to look up that one a little more. That one's scary. Okay? I love people in Barberville, there's some really good people, but Sam Sula Spruce Creek, and I know Spruce Creek's being thrown under the bus by a crime area over there, 31.5. New Smyrna, 9.495. Port Orange, 11.87. Daytona, 14.17. Well, let me point out, where our wonderful sheriff got trained was over there where they're currently actually the 25th city in the nation for violent crime, and I realize that's due to tourism. Orman Beach, 12.4. Edgewater, 11.44. Lowest crime, Lake Helen, Florida. And they give a grade rating for the three categories of crime. Violent crime grade, A. Property crime grade, A+. Other crime, A+. Overall, A+.
Amen.
Okay, I'm staying on topic here. We're talking about truth here. We're not talking about, ooh, that the city wasted a bunch of money and we need to take and, and because there's other areas that are deficient money-wise, it don't need to be taken away from our officers.
That's right.
Now, while there are some violent crimes in crime areas in our county in Lake Helen, if you look just at the statistic on violent crimes, we are almost ill and void. Every now and then one will happen, okay? Our officers are so in the community that I can sit here and almost tell you eight different ones where they knew who did the crime while they were doing their preliminary structure. There were three truck break-ins, and when they came, because one of, my son was one of the trucks broke in, when they came to me, they said, this guy did the crime. Two weeks later, he got arrested for it, it was him. When our church got vandalized, the detective and the officer looked at me and said, by the way, we know who did this crime. It was finished at 4:45 in the morning. At 9:30 that morning, one of our officers told me, here's who did the crime. Two weeks later, they arrested him. They know the beat of our city.
Ron Paris?
Ron Paris. I would call, I agree with Charlie.
Thank you. Next.
Janice Triggers?
My name is Janice Triggs.
Help her out there, bud.
And I'm not tall. You give up your local police department, those fellows that you see in the circle K, or somewhere checking for speeders, and you go, oh, they ain't doing their job. How do you know they ain't doing their job? Is it your opinion? Have you seen a crime committed that they didn't see? We need what we have. We have what we need. Turn it over to Volusia County. You know what happens when small towns turn things over to their county? You lose that little town. I've lived here all my life. I don't want to see Lake Helen that. And as long as you keep turning things over to somebody else, it will adapt, whether you've been here all your life, whether you've only been here a couple of years. Make the right decision. Thank you.
Amen.
How y'all doing?
Good.
Doing okay? Well, I'm retired police officer, medically retired. I was working in Central County. I was part of the county safety traffic team, and also part of the emergency operations team. In 2004, when the hurricanes hit, I spent almost an entire month in the line of high school. I was a police officer. The county units had to go to the county emergencies. The city units had to go to the city emergencies. We took care of our city. We had to take care of it. That was our responsibility. We don't blame the county guys for taking care of their responsibility. By our small town is not their responsibility. It's their responsibility, and they're the ones that will pick up the ball every time.
Amen.
You know, it doesn't change. When it gets, when it hits the fan, that's what happens. It really is. The same thing with the traffic between I-4 and Deltona. That highway out here would become a major racetrack for Deltona. Whether you like it or not, that's what's going to happen. It really will happen. The same thing coming off I-4 and Main Street. It will happen. I understand that the county will do what they can, but you're not a priority. We are a priority with the police department.
Amen.
We always will be. You can tighten up your belt, but getting rid of the police department is dropping your pants.
Yep.
You run around naked, you know? And criminals know that, and this is where they'll come, in time. The guys that are moving around in the city all the time with their windows down, listening. You can hear the fights, and where they're at, and where it's going to be. You know where it's going to happen, and you go to that spot. You hear the call coming over the radio, you already know where that spot is. I'm sorry, the county won't do that.
Amen.
I love the county and what the guys did. I mean, I've had moments where they saved my life, but they've had moments where I saved theirs. You know, they'll come in, but the first person to come is the police department. And you want them there when it happens. Okay, we'll go back. We'll go back to the '04. When the hurricane hit, no four.
Probably the three minutes.
Thank you.
I've known you since you were inside with Davy, and you've known my whole family. Lake Helen Police Department has always been there to assist in my son. Y'all know that my son passed away not too long ago. We dialed 911, they were at my house, the first ones at my house. Same thing with my mother when my mother was sick. They were the first ones there to be, to argue over who was going to call me to tell me my mom died, because they didn't want to deal with that. And the city of Lake Helen has such a great small town. Like everybody said, we don't have crime. And when we do, it comes from somewhere else, like the land or Deltona. Other towns come out here. I'm not going to take all my time, but the one thing I am going to say is the most disrespectful thing I've ever seen in my life was when you smiled when that man said he got shot in the line of duty. I work for Daytona State College. I make more money than most of these police officers do. Would you put a bulletproof vest on for $21 an hour?
Rude!
Mayor, commissioners, good evening. Mark Parish, 139 West Martin Street. I've lived in Lake Helen for quite a while, and then just over peace down the road. I grew up on Pacio Road in Deegan, Florida. Firstly, I'd like to, full disclosure, many of you know that my brother-in-law is Chief Mullins. Today is his birthday, so I'd like you all to wish him happy birthday.
A couple of points that I do want to make is that, especially with the consideration of possibly putting this on the ballot, I don't think that's fair to the voters. I don't think that's fair to the police officers, and I think it would be bad for morale. How would you feel if your job hung in the balance of an up or down vote before the electorate? How would you feel when you pull over that citizen for a traffic violation and you see that Lake Helen address knowing that you must give a citation to somebody that's going to vote whether or not you get to keep your job or not? That's not the way to go. You, as duly elected representatives, owe it to us to reject this proposal, as vague for many of the reasons that were outlined, that there was not enough time to get the adequate details, and then you just go from there. But we need to look at other ways to find the revenue, make the cuts, and that sort of thing. You can go after federal dollars, you can go after state dollars, you can go after county dollars. Yes, we can get shot down by the governor, but we don't stop here and we don't la off an institution that has been part of this town for many, many, many decades. And clearly, you see that all of the citizens are behind our Lake Helen Police Department. Amen.
Burn it.
We don't want to hear from you.
Too bad. I need to say something.
You're coming with.
I need to say something.
We don't want to hear from you.
No, because you're allowing these people to be disrespectful and rude.
You're rude!
And that's not supposed to mean no personal attacks, remember?
Please sit down.
Why don't you run for my seat? You can have that.
Let me underscore, let me underscore what Commissioner Bishop is saying, which he is correct. Miss H, miss H, listen. On this, please, please, please. On this part of the discussion, you are to address the commission as a whole. The commission on its part is not to engage in back and forth. So if you do your part, we'll do our part. Say what you have to say. You got three minutes, Cookie. You got to run, your bell running. I'm going to be ready. I'm going to emphasize what I've already did. You're supposed to address the commission as a whole. Thank you.
My name is Alan Cook, Cookie, and I'm at 792 Oak Tree Lane. I'll just put it right out front. I'm a gentleman over there. Know to be a guy, to be known. Know to be a guy, and be know to be a good guy. Right? And plus that, there's four people walking through this town right now that it wasn't for them, they'd be dead. Okay, they got in there, brought them back and everything else, they handed them everything else, the whole thing. But the big thing is the crime situation. When I came to this town, the drugs were like unbelievable. I mean, I couldn't believe 35 years, the drugs are bad. I had them back me up on my own neighbor and put him in jail for selling drugs in front of the street from my house. Right there, did it, put him in jail. Drugs in this town have gone down from almost none. And believe it or not, they're smoking regular cigarettes in there, not the others. But I'll tell you one thing, I've dealt with this thing three times. This is the third time I've brought this up about this whole thing with the police department. I got two of the sheriff's ears in years. Tell me, Cookie, you stay where you're at, you're much better off. Thank you.
Thank you. What's your name?
Prichet.
Prichet? Yes.
So, Prichet Ryan, I'm 24125. I have just a couple of comments. It's not about getting rid of our police department or keeping our police department. Our most important thing here now is to address our deficit and to address our budget. If the police department isn't the option, then we have, everybody should know this.
Congratulations to us.
Sorry, we have 3,000 citizens of Lake Helen, 1,800 homes. That number is available to everyone. How many people come out to your commission meetings on a regular basis? Maybe 15, maybe. Right now, we may have 30 or 40 in here because of the police issue, but that's really not the issue. The issue here is we have to address our budget. I am retired. I live on a set income, and I don't know how many of you other are. But the taxes that are going up, the agulera is going up, I can't continue to keep paying if we can't do something about our budget.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, 313 North Privat Avenue, Lake Helen, Florida. I have only bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Rollins College. I started a law enforcement career in 1972 at the Gemma Florida, Lake Helen. I retired from Blush County Sheriff's Office. I have taught community policing at college level. We have community policing. We have three generations that I represent in my own family that served the city of Lake Helen. They didn't serve with any greater honor, greater honor than the officers that we have today. You have a gem in this police department. You need to appreciate what you have. Those are the same officers that's gonna sit beside you at the restaurant. They're gonna jump your car off when your battery's dead. They're gonna come to your house, get that cat up and under your house. They're gonna do all the things that typically police departments do not do. But because they live in Lake Helen, because they support Lake Helen, because they work in Lake Helen, because they know you as individuals from Lake Helen, they're here to protect and serve. Honor and believe and support what you have. We have a great police department. We have very dedicated officers. The Blush County Sheriff's Office, having been retired from there, we have four lane thoroughfares that are county roads leading through Lake Helen. You have every opportunity, if one commissioner, city administrator, mayor, anyone would contact Blush County Sheriff's Office and ask for a traffic support unit, they would be here the following day. We have yet, I have yet, to see Blush County at any point in time run any traffic in Lake Helen. We frequently see Lake Helen. We have, I live on Privat Avenue, we've had cars go through there in excess of 140 miles an hour. Several well over 100. You might get that from the Sheriff's Office. Privat Avenue is his county road, they have that responsibility. Everything that the Sheriff's Office has to offer is available to Lake Helen. You pay county taxes. You have the services, you have the backup, you have all the support from Blush County. When I was patrol supervisor in Blush County, all those incorporated areas, we had Oak Hill that was fully covered by Blush County. That was part of my supervisor area. Blush County covered that. But I can tell you one thing, if, if you had an officer in Lake Helen from the Sheriff's Office and he got a call to go to Samsula, he would leave Lake Helen and go to Samsula, which is within that zone of spread. Don't ignore and don't underestimate the value of what you have.
Thank you.
Here, Commissioners. I confess that I always interfered with the vacation. And I would like to read part of what I had prepared. This evening, our community is gathered here on and offline. To ponder a concern near and dear to us, which our ancestors always supported wholeheartedly. From when we went from a one-town marshal to one full-time policeman who later served as our mayor here, you just heard speak, to today's local police department. We know it's hard for law enforcement personnel to be people pleasers at times, as well as those serving on our city commission, including our mayor, who was once a policeman. So we pray that those who serve our community will show discernment and consensus in their deliberations this evening. I can add to that a couple of things. Where else can you go, you have a call, now to the police station, Lynn answers the phone, you let her know you're gonna be gone for a while, and then the police are gonna check on your house. Believe me, that is a good, comfortable feeling. Sure is. And then know who you are. And one, one person I didn't need that, though, I'll mention, she was planning to be here tonight. I don't know how many of you remember Sister Anna Haskins. Yes, she was a nun, she was head of St. Peter's, principal of St. Peter's Catholic School. And when Chief Chester asked her, because she wanted something to do, if she'd like to go to the police academy, become a reserve policeman, serve the city of Lake Helen, she did. For 22 years. Everything from school to crossing guards and so on. And Robin just did an interview of her in churches, her day after church. So, that's what I wanted to say, except my heart fills with pride. Like tonight, when I'm with you and I'm here, all of the responses and participation, one way or another, I am proud to be a citizen of Lake Helen. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to make one clarification. I'm the latest New York City Police Officer of the New York City Corrections Offices. I worked in jails in Rockville Island, that's just a clarification.
I also have that in the newspaper.
So first, I'm gonna start off with these, so I can get them out of my hands. I've picked up 206 signed papers supporting the police department. I'll be, I'll be fair to you, not all of them are voters. But they are business owners, which are taxpayers who support our police department, who support our city. One thing I will say for the citizens, that might only pay a little bit of money. They all have insurance from their cars here. Anybody who pays insurance also pays towards our pension, so they are a contributor to our police department. And I thank them for that. So there's those 206 signed signatures that we brought up from the time that, recently, before the meeting was changed till the day, and we assumed it would be on the 21st. One thing I have to say is that we're brought up as kids to pick what you do in your life. You're told that you pick a job or you pick a career, and I picked a career. I came here to Lake Helen, I devoted my job here to Lake Helen for that career. You'd say that as a job for life? You can't say that. I did pick my job for life here. You know why? My pension stays here. If I'm gone, my pension is done. I am 44 years old, where do I go start a pension? At 44 years old and finish it, when I'm 80, I'll be dead. Police officers don't live that long. So yes, you are taking part away from my life. Another thing is I'm a citizen of this town. As far as I can remember, we've had a police department. I know many of the people inside the city. I can tell you that switching over to a sheriff's department, I guarantee you will not drive down to that station and have 24-hour coverage of us sitting there at that station during a storm, driving through the storm to check on houses. But the certain people that fall out, then we still go out there, go to their house, knock on the door, make sure their mother's still okay because they're in Pennsylvania and afraid that they're in a storm and something's wrong. We drive through the villas during storms. We drive through the villas at night. The county's gonna have one, maybe one deputy here. That's what you're looking at, the one deputy. But where's that deputy gonna be? We're controlling them now, where's that deputy? You talk about our raises. Our raises are that we're gonna make $59,000, $61,000, that's great. I've been here 10 years. $59,000, but he said it's starting deputies. $59,000 starting deputy. And I've been here 10 years, and I make, I'll be making $2,000 more than that deputy. And I'd rather make that $2,000 more than be a Blush County deputy and not work inside the city I live in. I'd rather, I'd rather be in the city, working for the people that I, I see every day, go to their houses, see at the kangaroo. That's what is meant to be in the city. You're not gonna change anything we do. You're not gonna get no more level service. You're not, can't come up there and describe a kid to me that's from the city, that lives in the city, and tell me that deputies wanna say I know who that is. It's not gonna happen. I can tell you that, and then just within the last two weeks, we've had three runs that we picked up and we falled within a matter of hours because we knew that the person wanted it. One was just a simple, the girl had pink hair and a golf cart. We found her within three hours, returned the property, it was stolen from her front porch. And she was happy about it. Did she wanna press charges once she got her flag back? No. But you know what? The county said you either file charges or you, that's it. Our purpose is without her flag back, that's what she wanted. She got her justice.
Thank you.
My name is Nate Winters. I've been in this community for 33 years. And first of all, I'd like the gentlemen to sit, instead of us both on it, why don't y'all guys just take up the police department and say, hey, we're not doing this. There you go.
Amen. Amen.
Yeah, let's go into battle, we don't wanna wait. We need to do it now. I know you say it's a little turnout thing, but I think with this subject matter, the people wanna show up in the police department. On top of that is, we don't wanna live down the middle of a town. I, I was out of town years ago for four months, and I talked with Mike Walker and Scott and the rest of them. I said, I'm gonna be out of town. The police officers know who my wife is. And they were there every day for four months, checking on them. Are you okay, James? Neither of you. That's invaluable. I'm from a big city, and you can't get that anywhere. When I first moved here and I found out that it was just five or six cops, I said, that's a beautiful thing. We live this umbrella, we're gonna be in trouble. The reason why, like Cookie said, we had a lot of drugs in this town. It was a pest. Police Department cleaned it up. I mean, now, and you talk to the drug dealers in town and ask them to come visit, like I know some, I like to play chess, nobody don't wanna come to Lake Helen. They're very, they say, oh, hell, I'm not going to Lake Helen. They say, man, when you go over the bridge, you gotta slow down. They're watching. We get rid of our police department, we're not gonna have that. The crime is gonna come. Maybe not right now, the drugs are gonna come back in. The crime is gonna come in. I'd like to be able to leave my house and go fishing over the weekend and know that my wife is safe. They live, please, take our police department away from us, man. That, that burns my heart, it makes me nervous. I see our community as a safe town. And we wanna keep it that way. We really do. Keep our police department, please. Thank you, Nate.
There's only one, there's only one more left, I'll give you.
Fiona Ash, meet Marie Pineda, Lake Helen, Florida. You brought up earlier about reserve officers. I was a reserve officer in Lake Helen. I put on the vest and the belt every day for free in this town. Every day. I would never do it anywhere else in any other department. I worked for the Sheriff's Department. Let me tell you guys the difference you will get between deputy and Blush County and officer in Lake Helen. You can't even, it's, it's not even apples to oranges. I left the Sheriff's Department because of how crooked they were. I left the Sheriff's Department, a paid job, and did it voluntarily in Lake Helen because of how crooked the Sheriff's Department was. I live in the county, as some of you know. You say I don't pay taxes, well, we've already been down that road. Over half of the people in Lake Helen don't pay taxes to the city. I pay $6,200 a year to the county for taxes. Part of that does go to the city. And besides that, I volunteered my life to this area. I walked many streets in this area and I was never worried as law enforcement. I raised two children in this area. My kids snuck out like everybody else does, but I never worried about them because I had people like our chief that would call and say, you know who your son is? Not in his bed. You will not get that anywhere. If we go to the county, the officer that's here will be in Deltona, the land, or the city. We will have, there will be no officer. Any one of our meetings, we'll have to pay for a deputy. Any of our parades, any of our events, anything, we have to pay for a deputy. I had so many other points that I wanted to say, but it's, everywhere around right now knows that we're debating between city and county. So that means all of those crime areas that, I'm sorry, somebody mentioned all the crime, the different areas. Once, if we leave, and if we get rid of the police department, and we have county come here, a lot of the areas that were mentioned, the county oversees. I assure you, our crime will go through the roof in this small town. Because in a small town, we leave our doors and windows unlocked. We have, people say that they sit at the gas station all day, every day. Well, that's not necessarily true. They drive every square inch of this town. I have had them come to my house, like it or not, I live in the county. But they came to my house for the request of the Sheriff's Department because my response time for my house was over an hour. And I pay for the Sheriff's Department. I don't pay for city police. City police here have come to my house because the Sheriff's Department wouldn't. My neighborhood, none of this really works. If you lose the police department, you also lose animal control and you lose code enforcement. Those are two things that are not part of the Sheriff's Department that we, as Lake Helen, will also have to pay. So just kinda think about that. Amongst other things, we have the best police department in the United States.
Your name and address?
Sheena Lynn, 721 Hudson Street. I haven't heard anybody talk of kids. I've been here since I was five, I've had multiple homes, my niece lives here, my sister owns a business here, my mom lives here. They do check on my mom, she lives here by herself. I appreciate the police department for, my mom says they drive down her street multiple times a night. That's the part of me worried about her, and I live in the same town as her. The idea that I grew up in this town riding my bicycle all around town and...
that my kids can ride their bikes and feel safe in this town. Their kids come to my house from other cities to ride their bikes. They're in my garage. These, my kids look up to these police, police officers. They see them all the time. I do know that, I think, I love the Sheriff's Department and everything, but I think that they, if they were to come here, we would barely see them. They wouldn't know us, like our police know us. So I just think for the kids and everything, I think we need to just keep it the way it is, please. Thank you.
I have two left. Joey Decker and Jim Connell. Both made a request.
I'm, I'm, you're gonna get your vote?
I am.
I'm almost there, but you gotta, you're like... I know you do, brother. My name is Jim Connell, and I'm a 71 tangerine. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your service. Because there's a handful of us in this room who've sat up there and noted that it's not always easy. It's always sometimes tough. There's always sometimes gracious and beautiful. I learned when I was a commissioner, when Janice Dreggers got up and spoke, my world stopped. I'll listen to that one. I admit, everyone. All right. Those are my commercials. Quickly, I'd ask, did you second the motion that brought from the commission? Do you second it? I would suggest that you withdraw your second. I would suggest that you withdraw your motion. You can read the room. There's no point in putting this to a ballot question. You've got so much.
My motion was to keep the police department.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, because the motion by itself is one.
Reject the proposal.
So, just the same, y'all read the room. No sense in putting this to a ballot, then, y'all. Thank you.
Joey Decker, 215 South Yucatan. Anybody else in this room, but Charlie, love you dearly. You know we've had a long relationship, right? Take everybody else out of this room. Me, you and Wayne are sitting on that porch. I've known you my whole life, right? You cannot really think deep down in your heart that it's the best thing for Lake Helen. It's almost intimidating for me that when I come by the house and see you and mom, and I always wanna stop on the porch because I know it can't be the actual effect in your heart. You can't believe, and I don't want anyone to speak, is it just me and you are not yelling? You can't deep down, that's the best thing for us. No, it's just, no yelling, no screaming. Come, you really think, besides the money, leave the money out.
Joey, this, this responds, I see him respond.
I wanted to respond, but ready?
Not a dis...
It's not a dis...
You guys can speak it out loud. We're all the way through this now, Joey, so let's just clear this.
I'm not gonna stand all day showing with that, but it's not anything, it's a loving, right? Nobody loves this town more than this guy. I'll put it on my back any day, no offense to anybody in this room. You can't deep down think that me, you, Wayne are sitting on a porch and think it's the best thing for the police force. There's, there's just, there's just no way. I can't believe that, no, you, right? Because of what you've done in our, in our hood, in our life. I just, I love you dearly, and I know there's a lot of people that work in here right now, but I don't think that's the best thing in the world for Lake Helen, as it is of our police force. And I hope, thank you for your time. I'd like to begin speaking. At any time, you'd like to have a conversation?
I'll make a statement after.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you. Was that the last one?
That's it.
Was that the last one? Okay. From the commissioners. Comments?
Yes, I would like to say...
Yes, please.
What Joey said. Nobody, and, and I don't even know how this even got turned into all of this. It just was a simple, get the numbers together, compare apples to apples, see some of our options. Because I also, if y'all remember correctly, tried to cut Public Works' budget, but nobody wanted to do that either. And it's always the people with the least amount of investment financially that are the loudest. They want what they want, but they want somebody else to be paying for it. So as far as, I love those guys that work at the police department, and they know it. But I would like, as I feel is my responsibility, to look at everything. I don't understand what the harm is in that. And y'all say don't put it on the ballot because you've got maybe 30, 40 people supporting something, but that's not the whole town. And if, if there's so much support, it's not a problem to put it on the ballot because it'll be, it'll blow it out of the water with the vote. So this, the whole thing just makes no sense to me, how this got so blown out of proportion that nobody can trust their citizens here to make the right decision. Nobody wants to even look at anything as so closed-minded. Can we just get some information? I don't like coming here every month and not know what the hell I'm supposed to be talking about. I like to have information. I like to have the facts. I don't like to come out here and make decisions half-assed. And I know y'all think that I'm this and I'm that. And yes, I was rude to some people, but it, it was what I was getting, so that's what I gave back. I'm wrong for that, and I apologize. And I appreciate all you people coming here tonight and speaking your mind. And if y'all know me, I very rarely ever apologize. But that's what I'm doing, because I am what I am. And it's just how I am, and I'm sorry, I speak my mind. But for everybody to be so closed-minded, do, do y'all, do y'all understand what the word gentification is? Do you understand that? Because that is exactly what's happening, is going to happen to this town. Because when, there's many people here whose property is worth more than their homes. So what happens, and you can see it all around you, when somebody buys up an old house, they tear it down and they build a $500,000 house.
Your tax base.
That's your tax base, you're right. But that also makes your Volusia County taxes go up also. So eventually, these people are not going to be able to afford, the people that aren't paying anything right now, eventually, that's the whole, that's where the gentification happens, okay? Because we get all, we're gonna have all $500,000 houses, and you're right. And I'll be fine, because I'll still be living here, but some of these people that have been here forever, they won't be able to afford to stay here. And if people don't understand that, you better start thinking about it.
We need to have the facts. The way the process currently went was the wrong way. This should have been presented. We need to establish a committee with representatives from the city, from the police department, from the citizens, and from the Sheriff's Department to get together, to get all the facts together, to see what the truth is. That's the way it should have been handled. Not in the rush, push thing during budget crunch time, when everybody's worried about what the trim notice is gonna say and what the actual taxes are gonna be and everything like that. Did Mark Perry come back? His analogy he gave was a little bit off, because he was comparing the ballot initiative of, of the citizens, electing whether the Sheriff's Department was gonna stay, comparing to us. We are elected by you. So that's a bad comparison to put in there.
I don't follow, but...
But there is, there is a problem with the way the city gets income and stuff. And there have been many towns around that have gone through the same problems we have gone through. We need to make changes. We are an old town. We got old rules, and a lot of people don't like to see changes that'll, that'll increase our tax base. Deltona had a long time with a bunch of red tape. And businesses wanted to build in Deltona years ago. And Deltona said, no, can't do it because you don't meet our requirements. Orange City exploded. That's how Orange City got their Walmart, they got their Lowe's. They got everything that they wanted because those businesses couldn't build in Deltona.
We don't want that.
Even the mom and pop shops that, that Orange City has couldn't get into Deltona.
Have you seen the crime rate in Orange City?
Now, Deltona removed most of that red tape, and they started getting all their businesses and everything in there, and they exploded. We have zoning issues and land use issues, that block, building commercial development. An example is our downtown zoning is commercial residential. What do people buy that property for? Residential. The house next to the post office is in a commercial residential area. They put in a residential. We need to change our zoning, our land use, to be able to have a better input for commercial to get in here. We need to improve our water system to get commercial to come in here. So there are some things that we need to do that has been getting kicked down the road in the past. And these things need to change for us to be able to get the tax base we need to make, to bring relief to our citizens. We don't need to get rid of the police department.
The only thing that I'd like to say is that I came into this looking at facts, what can we do to better the city? What can we do to add to maintenance in the city? What can we do to possibly hire other employees to help in some situations when we have an employee out for a month or two months, whatever? This city is not run like a business. All I've heard since I've been in this position is, we need to run it like a business. It must be run like a business. Well, it can't be run by a business if it's being run on emotions. And it, there's something in this city where people get out on Facebook and it's all fake news, or they're tearing people apart. It's like when my opponent went nuts when his cat got torn apart. You can actually see that occurring on Facebook to human beings. So if we don't have any sympathy for animals, obviously, there's no sympathy for human beings. And our, our plan was to try to help this city. This city doesn't appear to wanna be helped, at least by a very small faction of people, those that live in the city, some, and those that live out of the city, some. So I'm still moving forward. I'm gonna go forward with it, and I'm going to do what I have to do to try to help this city.
Mr. Mayor? Let's keep in order. I know, but this is not the time and the place. Not the right, we're trying to get through this meeting. And I'd ask the commissioners to not make personal information available or whatever. That's why I'm just doing it. Let's stop. Let's just stop. Let's just stop. Most of us know what Facebook looks like, and we know what Facebook looks at, and so I'm not, I don't even look at it, to be honest with you. So we're not here for that. But right now, we're at a, attorney, or where are we? We had a motion, a second. Call the roll. Call the roll, okay? All the day, what was the motion again? To keep our police department, a second. I'll start this, zone four.
This is, is not like even a fair vote, because it's not like, keep running our police department. He should change that, to either we're going to get the information or we're not going to get the information.
The motion was moved in seconds, so we're just voting on the motion. Did I see, withdraw the motion or have anybody withdraw the second?
The vote away, that needs to be done now.
Okay, so we have a vote. Calling on the vote from zone, zone four.
Why are you on the zone four? That's not how it's obviously done.
Well, I've actually asked one, one commissioner to zone, to make a motion, they asked me to call myself. But one of the things I've noticed that we are, one of the things that I've seen as a commissioner, you have the right to bounce around. And that is what I just took the, to get, we only got one vote, so whatever the...
And it's a bull crap situation for somebody here, because this is not what this meeting was supposed to be about. So if you want to put me in that position, I'm gonna say no.
Okay, zone one.
Yes.
Zone three.
No.
Zone four. Yes. I'm zone two, I'm sorry. Yes. And there is, what's the count? Two, no.
Two, two.
Two, two. And I say...
We resign.
We have one more thing to handle, so I'm gonna take a five-minute recess here, and then we'll come back and we'll deal with the commissioners. You want to lead, Mike?
Why are you on the zone four? That's not how it's, obviously not.
Well, I've actually asked one, one commissioner to zone, to make a motion, they asked me to call myself, but one of the things I've noticed that we are, one of the things that I've seen as a commissioner, you have the right to bounce around. And that is what I just took the constitution to get. We only got one vote, so whatever the issue is.
And it's a bull crap situation for somebody here, because this is not what this meeting was supposed to be about. So if you want to put me in that position, I'm gonna say no.
Okay, zone one.
Yes.
Zone three.
No.
Zone four. Yes, I'm zone two, I'm sorry. Yes. And the mayor, what's the count? Two, no.
Two, two.
Two, two, and I say...
Two, please.
Two, please, please. We have one more thing to handle, so I'm gonna take a five-minute recess here, and then we'll come back and we'll deal with the commissioners, if you want to leave, bye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're kind of the end of the, uh, the second day, which we get in the second half. All right. We are, we're in a situation where, um, our city administrator has, uh, put this make work, and he is retiring at the end of the month. We have to give a, uh, as a, as a commission now, we have to decide on how we're gonna go through the process of picking this successor. We have, um, three individual companies that are asking for our, um, uh, permission. We did have a, a commission, we did have a group that hired, um, Jim, and they were also asking to be reconsidered to make a bid. Um, their bid was, uh, the same as it was last year, and, uh, the last time we did it. And when we selected them, when the, when the commission selected them last year, this was before I was running the commission, they were the highest bidder then, and they are the highest bidder now. So the only upside that they have is that they already have us in their database, and it would probably, would not take more than a couple days to come up with a candidate, because they already have a database. Our issue here is that our city, city administrator has a date certain that he is going to leave. I'll just say that one of the things that happened when we hired him, that, um, the last city administrator gave us the, the benefit of having him stay and stay of an overlap. So for two weeks, the both of the city administrators were here, and the first week, the outgoing city administrator was in the hot seat, and then Jim was in the bathroom, and then the last week they switched, and then the same thing happened. I'll also say that that was the first time that the mayor's position was able to be, without sunshine, that the outgoing mayor and the incoming mayor would not have had the opportunity to have that. I was elected in August, and I didn't get seated until November. So there was a precedent that was set at that time, which I think the city, for all intents and purposes, that they benefited by. Me as the incoming mayor, I also had, have a new city clerk, a deputy clerk, so there was a lot of things that we were able to do in that very short period of time. So now we're gonna have to make decisions as to whether the commission should come up with a, um, a selection of the three. If there's anyone that, that's gone through these, uh, through these applicants that have a motion that they'd like to make, or do you want to have discussion on it? And that's just to give you the, uh, the numbers. We have one that's twenty-nine thousand dollars, for the, um, one that's thirty-two thousand dollars, what was the other, twenty-eight thousand?
Twenty-eight seven.
Twenty-eight seven. Oh, so we have a range from twenty-eight seven to thirty-two thousand dollars, that their job is to go out and to beat the, uh, push, so to speak, and come back with, um, applicants. It's not guaranteed that the applicants that they will give will be the ones that we will select from, because at one point we had at least six applicants, and only three actually lasted to the very end. So we don't have a definite stage, and, um, we also have to make sure that, uh, it would be drawn back if we have, um, the city administrator would be flexible, as the previous city administrator was, to allow us to have some extended time to make that transfer. So that is all I'm gonna say about that. Uh, we'll send it up to the floor, to the committees.
How much is, um, you found in the garden?
Thirty-two-five. No, he's the same, but right now it's thirty-nine. That's for his other client, that we got that, that raised.
Well, one thing I noticed on Collins is, his was flat feet covering all of them except for the final interviews with the hotels, um, mileage and stuff like that of the candidates that we're gonna interview. Everybody else has stars and asterisks after it, that the feet can go up if we add different things to it.
One of the things that Collins did do on the last selection of Jim, in his sufficiency, he put recommended for the numbers of individuals that submitted, and then he had, in this case, he had submitted but not recommended. And that was because he wanted to, either because of what it felt, might be something of an issue, that means by being recommended, that means if we hired somebody, and within one year, that they don't not work out, then we would get another shot by every apple at no cost. What he did, when he submitted Jim, he submitted him as submitted without recommended, that meant that he was not going to give us that one year. However, when the city commission reviewed all of the applicants, Jim was obviously the best, and we selected them unanimously. And upon our unanimously selecting Jim, then he reverted back to that one year, that he would honor the year that he was had, had he just been both recommended as well as submitted. So, he did make an option on that, and Jim got past that one year, and so we're back here now.
Well, I like through them, I'm worried that what their fees are going to be, and even though Collins is the highest one, they're doing everything in that cost, whereas Sumter and MTT, we wanted to have a flyer made and published, it was going to cost more. If we wanted to do a different type of, a different background check, it was going to cost more, whereas all that's covered in Collins. So, theirs could go up, I mean, either 28.7 or 29, but theirs could go up if we wanted to have two of them, or Collins is covering everything, except for the final interview, transportation, and booking costs.
And I believe his was the email that said he was able to stick to the timetable, or he was allowed to respond to the timetable, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, he called me last week, saw an email that I was still here, and so I explained to him what was going on, and I told him, you know, the timeframe, and he said that what he initially put in this pack, he could probably cut, probably maybe two and a half weeks. Oh, wow. Yeah, so the back you have in front of you, his email, was to revise timeframe, and I think move it up to the early part of the month instead of the latter part of the month. But that all had to do with starting quickly.
Okay.
And I think the elements from the time that we approved it, I believe that it would be either mid or end of November, before they would have the interview before.
Is there probably a year or less?
Using the strikeback, let's see, the last arrangement that we had with Mr. Alborn, the city administrator, is that when his time was up, and we had not yet hit a replacement, then instead of us making a deal month to month, we made an arrangement, he accepted an arrangement that we would, he would stay here until we got the replacement, and then he would put the extension of the two behind that. And that negated us having to pay every month if we didn't get it, because the first submission he had, I think he submitted about six or seven names, and only three showed up, and then we were basically told that it may not be in this first group, but luckily, we did have that group, and we didn't have to extend the city administrator's contract arrangement, contractual arrangement beyond the point that we started in the first place. But these are just the flexibilities that we can approach the city administrator with. Whether he does or not, that is just up to him, but you know, whatever our circumstances are, that which we'll have to deal with at the time.
If you stay longer, our cook is, even your wife will stay in me.
The rabbit suit you brought in wasn't there? No, I, Mayor, I spoke with you, and I've spoken individually with a couple of the members. You know, I've said September 30, but you all are in that process, you're working towards a goal. I have no problem extending that and trying to match my time, maybe somebody coming in, so you don't even have to go through an interim, you know, transfer. That is a lot of burden on somebody in house, or if you find an independent out just to come in, take a job and is not interested in it, which is the ideal, but you all have to make the decision on that.
Except for the vacation you're locked in.
I have a vacation in November.
In my entirety of being on the board, I've never seen two administrators at the same time. When one administrator left, he didn't go. We didn't see him, we didn't hear, and for a lot of us commissioners as well, we didn't see him, so I respect that opportunity that we had with this last outgoing.
Well, are we ready for a motion? And then I'm going to put discussion form.
Are we ready for a motion? Just roll one up there.
Alright, I'm going to make a motion up the go with Colin, please finger.
Second. Motion moved as second, any discussion?
Okay, so reasoning.
Repeat that salary again, I mean, not the, the cost.
Thirty-two thousand five hundred.
Thirty-two thousand five hundred.
In the letter, well, my thoughts are, this is a known person to us, he's able to adhere to our timetable, and in the letter, it states that they have performed 152 of the last 230 recruitments, or 65 percent. Also, their home base is here in Florida, they do already have the flyer information pamphlet in order to attract talent, so they're able to move forward a little more quickly with the process, and that will take some of the burden off of Jim in order to not have to stay as long as I suppose. So, those are my thoughts, but I'm open here, whatever.
Ready?
I don't care.
Okay, the question is, which line item is the money coming from today for the incoming? Where would we get that?
Well, right now, you don't have a budget in line item, like you didn't have the last time, so.
General fund.
Yeah, the general fund, and then the other side of that you look at is, you know, you have to do an adjustment in the last budget amendment that took some money from reserves and balance, that budget net year, and you did that there, but that decision will be made more towards the end of your fiscal year, so you can see how your budgets turn out. You could end up with more revenue, and you got expenses, and you end up not having to take a call. You all know that until you get towards the end of the fiscal year.
Right, and we may have some carryover when we negotiate the administrator's salary.
And even though Collins' cost the last time was thirty-two five, I think the total cost between what we did have to spend to get the new city administrator was just shy of forty thousand.
You had expenses at the end involving hotels, whatever, and bringing that in, and whatever the traffic costs were, so, again, depending on where people are coming from. That, you all would determine whether you want someone to come from out of state, so something to instigate, to drive. So, you provide a hotel like you did in Deland, and you're going to want them to stay minimum one night, you know, because you're going to have some type of reception, and then in terms of that, and then you get out here and use it next one, unless someone is within the driving distance, and you took it to do a lot of the hotel.
Sure, I guess my point is that we're looking at thirty-two thousand five for Collins, but then there are additional costs to go along with bringing anyone to win, so I just wanted to make that point.
There's no cost beyond the, you know, the law.
Yes, yes.
I just have to go back to, we brought Collins in a year and a half ago, we looked up a year and a half ago, he's got everything that he needs. We're looking at thirty-two five, which is exactly what we paid for, so okay, he's increased his price to thirty-nine. Why cannot we negotiate with him and say, you have everything, could you take the twenty-nine thousand, which would be that second quote that we left? I mean, why do we have to pay everything everybody's asked for without negotiating? He's got it all ready for him to go. Twenty-nine thousand is better than nothing.
Well, the motion on the floor, we want to draw your vote.
It's based on what the RFP says. Isn't a third favor based on what was requested in the RFP?
No, we just reached out, so, most, Sumter reached out to me, because they heard about, and so they said, you know, can we send him a proposal? I said, yeah, the commission's entered. MGT, I don't know who they are, I've not heard of them, and then Collins was just asked to do a proposal. It doesn't say, if there's a motion denied, if he's higher, and the motion is thirty-two five, would you like us to see if he got it to twenty-nine? I mean, that can happen, but, you know, it wasn't my job to start negotiating with individuals, and so you all decided to go to the election. And he did say that he could be available this week, and that he would meet with you, Lynn, and the mayor individually, even at hotels, for his conference, the X, and then come and let Collins meet with Collins, and if that was needed, if a fun interview was ever, I mean, if he gets time, it's up to him.
Not me, at the leash.
Well, he showed to be someone that can be bargained with, because he did not have to give us that one year extension that he automatically said no. So, he did make that exception to give us that coverage because of the commission's main character.
So, I guess I could amend my motion, then?
Motion amended?
To approve, or to move forward, Colin, but to see if there is some negotiation we can do in order to bring the price down to twenty-nine.
To make, to attest, to make?
To attest, right, but either way, move forward.
Motion moved as second? Discussion?
Do you have any discussion?
Do you have a question?
Yes.
My name is Jim Collins, 271 San Andreas, here in Lake Collins. I think, call in my world, invitation to negotiate, to your point. You award the bid, but you also award the bid with invitation to negotiate, which allows you then, if you cannot fit the negotiation, it allows you then to go back to either rebid, or to go to your second, or your third, your third offender. Invitation, ITM, invitation to negotiate.
Thank you. So, could we put that on this? Invitation to?
That's kind of what she said, I don't know.
Yeah, that is the term. Well, because it happens in my world, Colin.
This is actually called a request for qualification.
Okay, perfect, let's do that.
You've got, you've got, so we're just, you're basically saying, this is our selected one, we can negotiate, why, based on, and we'll discuss it. A little over a year and a half ago, you did all this stuff, you have all the information you say is relevant. So, the question is, does, if he says no, does he have to come back to the final approval?
I would say yes, because if you say no, then you're already awarded, there's no more for negotiation. So, I think I would bring it back to you for final approval on the contract, to say that he's been selected for negotiating, and he wants to lower, and there's no guarantee that they will award it to you. If you keep your prices, and we drop it a little bit, to reach your chances.
Could we word that in a?
That's how, that's how you all the motion is determined.
I mean, to, to Collins. Alright, you think we should vote? Oh, anyone else? No one else? Okay, let us vote. Zone one.
No, I want to change it. I want to change my motion.
Can't keep doing that to me.
I'm sorry, I thought about it. Can I amend it again? Can I put it back to what it was before? Okay, just my thoughts.
Withdraw, all, all over.
Wait, wait.
Okay. Back to, back to the starting point.
Sorry, this is a fluid conversation.
Do we have a motion to accept the?
Yes, I would like to just go with the first thing that I said. Let's go with Collins. I, over three thousand dollars, I, I mean, and then to come back to us, the next time we meet is the 21st, that delays us another two weeks. So, over three, the three thousand dollars, I don't, I personally think it's worth the investment, and so that's where my motion stands. Sorry.
Let me help you understand. So, our motion is to accept this, this, this bid.
Subject to negotiation.
Motion, motion accepted as the bidding, zone one?
Yes.
Zone two?
Yes.
Zone three?
No.
Zone four?
No.
And I'll say yes. Thank you so much. I think that's about it for tonight. Yes, 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 uh, hi, Mayor.
Nancy Hiller, who is the president of the Florida, of Florida Lega mayors, and Mayor Daytona Beach shores, and I think she's also the Florida Lega city president, sent an email to me today, the sad news. The executive director, Karen Hamlin, father passed away yesterday. He was admitted to hospice the previous week. She was also contacted that Deberry Vice Mayor, Phyllis Buklen's husband, David, passed away yesterday, and that she has not been informed of any arrangements, but we'll certainly follow up to do if she does hear any information. She sent the addresses for both of them, if the city wants to do anything, sending a sympathy card, or flowers, or something like that.
Thank you.
Also, at 4:55 today, I got a text message from my older sister, that my younger sister passed away. She was in hospital since mid-July, and went into hospice, and she passed away at 4:55 second. She had suffered multiple strokes, and she, they had to drill into her skull to relieve the pressure, and her system just went downhill from there. We don't know what the arrangements are, except that she's been cremated, I haven't heard anything else about what they're going in.
Where's she living? Upstate?
No, she's, she lives locally, I'm not sure if she lived in Daytona Beach or Deland recently, I know she used to live in Northside, Deland, but I don't know if she moved to Daytona Beach after her husband passed away or not.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, all has to quit. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're leaving, we can leave quietly, if not, the commission tonight would like to say something.
Jim, Peter Roxian, Karen is really a very special person, I know you've probably worked with her, Karen constantly works with her. If we could, from the city, send something to Karen, I'm going to be sad probably not to see her this weekend. Also, I would like to mention that I went to Daytona Airport, which is quite a long drive, especially in the rain.
drive, especially in the rain, but I attended a storm, a storm committee, flooding, storm flooding committee, whatever, I'm tired now. A lot of good information went out, we sent some information out on Facebook. Anybody who has had any damage, I don't care how small you think it might be, please look at the Facebook, make contact with people's numbers there, if you don't know how to navigate around, call me, I'll be happy to help you. This is our one chance, it's going to be very competitive, to get houses restored, and there's several, really several grants that are being offered in the state of Florida that we haven't even heard about. So I'm going to be investigating that. There's grants out there that, as we've all heard, to get a grant, you got to have a match. Well, there's other brands out there that we can get, that literally will take up that match for the city. So, please, if you've had any problems, go out and take a look at that website, and like I said, call me if you have any problems.
Take a minute? We're done.
Great. I just want to say to the people in this room that I was called out for laughing at her. No, I know, but you told him, and he came outside and apologized to me in my face, but he should have done it in here, when he tried to make me look like an ass in front of everybody.
I agree.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.